And today we are excited to have Isha Mora with us as she will be going over shear and moment diagrams. Before we start, I'd like to make a few chapter announcements. First, we want to say thank you to our sponsors, our ARE series sponsors, Haderian Architects, Gold Chapter sponsors, Roman Engineers and MN Builders, and Silver Chapter sponsors, Da Vinci Marble and BKG Structural Engineers. Session rules, please mute yourself to reduce background noise, feel free to unmute and ask questions at any time. Also, feel free to add questions in the chat box below. Do not discuss any specific exam questions, that's not permitted by NCAR, and note that this session is being recorded. A little bit about our guest speaker, in case you didn't attend the first session. So Isha Mora PE is an award-winning licensed engineer with DPR Construction. Her background includes building enclosures and structural engineering. And she specializes in PSS and prefabricated structures for higher education and healthcare models. She recently moved from Phoenix where she served in leadership roles with the Structural Engineering Association, Women in Healthcare, and was involved within various other organizations. She's excited to be in Newport Beach and tell me to be on board with the community here, Dr. Lee and California and so forth. During the weekend, she loves to host dinner parties and try new restaurants with her husband. Other than eating, she enjoys going hiking with her dog and spending time with her friends and family. With that, I will stop sharing my screen and Isha, you'll pick session yours.
Awesome. Okay. Well, thank you so much for that introduction again Mohammed. And thank you for everybody else who came again to come hear me speak. So last time we went over some design loads and load path. Today, we're going to go through shear and moment diagrams. And for this presentation, it's a little, it's a little bit more structured than last time. Here's kind of a timeline that we're going to go through. We're going to start off with understanding some concepts prior to deep diving into solving for reactions, shear and moment diagrams, things like that. And then, once we get through each of these portions, a star kind of means if you have any questions, please ask those questions at that time. And then, and if everyone's good, you get a star, and then we move on to the next portion. And then towards the end, we'll go through an example together. And I prepared a couple homework problems for you guys. And I didn't include the solutions, so if you guys want to go through the homework problems, feel free to email them to me and I will send you the solutions back. All right. So to get started. So I know that we talked a little bit about loads last time. So where we went into like dead load, live load, things like that. But we didn't go how, go into how these loads come in different forms. So there is going to be uniformly distributed load. Point loads, and in some cases, they'll be angled loads. These are the three loads or load types that we're going to focus on during this class. It can get more complicated than this, but you're not going to see that on the ARE exams. All right. So with these loads, something that you guys would need to understand when trying to simplify them is for a distributed load. And when I say simplify, like we want to turn this entire figure into like a, like a free body diagram. So I'm going to redraw our beam here. And say if we gave this uniform load, like an arbitrary 100 pounds per foot. And that will always be the unit that a uniform load will be in. There'll be some kind of weight over a length. When we simplify that for calculation purposes, we're going to take this uniform load and multiply it by its overall length. So if we say that this was 10 feet, then this uniform load will get simplified and represented at the center of that load by 10 feet times 100 pounds per foot, which will be equal to 1,000 pounds. A point load, naturally, it's already simplified down to a point load. But let's say for this triangular load, it's going, and if it started at about 100 pounds per foot, and then it went all the way down to zero. Now let's say it's also that same length of 10. Then that's going to look like 10 feet times 100. And since triangles tend to be half of what a rectangle is, then it's going to be divided by two. Equals 500 pounds. And to locate that 500 pound load for a triangulately loaded load, then it's going to be one third away from its heaviest point. Or two thirds away from the lightest point. So if this is 10 feet, and if this was the end of the beam, then this would be located at 10 foot times two thirds. All right. Are there any questions about this concept?
Yeah, I think Hannah in the chat bar is asking, do you need to reference where the point load location of the first load is? Which is five feet?
Yes. That would occur at the center of where it is, so it's, it would be five feet. For some reason, I'm running into the same issue again, I can't find the chat box. Yeah, I'm not sure where the chat box is. Sorry.
Are you able to see the chat box?
I, I'm not, for some reason, it's not showing up.
Okay. The second question for Hannah, she's asking, does it matter what type of triangle is for the location of the angle load?
If you're, no, it wouldn't, I don't know, it would not matter what type of triangle. Usually, usually the loading that would be provided will always be a right triangle. But say if you ended up with a triangle or a loading situation that looks like this, you can simplify it to two loads. Like so. I wish there was a way to find the chat box. Anyway. And then all right. So the next piece is understanding types of supports. So for every structure, there's always going to be so it always will be like statically determining. And what that means is that you can solve out the loads that are within your structure.
Can I ask on the previous diagram of the triangle, when it's actually yeah, that way, why is it in two points? When, if it's isometric probably, then it shouldn't be in the middle of the triangle?
So say if so if you had a triangular load, and if it wasn't symmetric.
Oh, okay. If it wasn't symmetric. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. And even if it was symmetric, you could do a load in the middle. But if you were to do a load that was like on either side, that's also a pretty safe bet as well. Before the sake of simplicity, if it, if it wasn't symmetric, then it would be best to have each, to cut this triangle in half and have the two separate loads.
That makes sense now. Thank you.
All right. So going to supports. So there's going to be three conditions. And so it's going to be pinned where your structure is going to be held in place going up and down. And so in the Y direction, and it's also held in place going left to right, so in the X direction. Another support is called a roller, where your roller is only resisting load in the Y, Y direction. And if you could think of like a cart, it's like a roller within, if you had two rollers, then your structure would kind of roll away. And then there's a fixed condition, which is really common for a common type of analysis, especially for awnings or campies, things like that, where there's a structural member that is sticking out. Another example would be also the dogging. Where you would have resistance or your support would resist load in the Y direction, the X direction, but it would also resist your moment. Whichever direction your moment is. Does anybody have any questions about the supports?
Shouldn't the arrow on the rectangle be in the opposite direction horizontally?
So for moments, it's always, so it's rotational. So representing it this way is correct?
No, the horizontal. Yeah.
What was your question for that again?
Shouldn't, shouldn't the direction of force be on the, going to the left side? To where the support is?
It can't be shown that.
Support above. Oh, there you go. Okay, gotcha.
It can be shown that way.
Okay, I was tricked. I didn't reference. Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions? All right. So then going back to what, with there being resistance going upside, moving the moment, something that is critical to always have consistent is your sign convention. And a good way to use that is by drawing a box. And for like, not necessarily drawing blocks, but we'll just show it that this way for now. If you have your, oftentimes on the, I'm pretty sure, this is like common practice within the US. And I'm pretty sure on the exam, it's going to be the same sign convention. And Mohammed, correct me if this, if this is incorrect for specifically the AREs. So the load going up will always be positive. Load going down will always be negative, or considered negative in direction. And then for your moment, if you have it going in the counterclockwise direction, that's considered positive. And if I'm sorry, if it's going in the counterclockwise direction is considered positive, and if it's in the counterclockwise direction, then it's negative. All right. So any questions about like sign convention? Three, two, one. All right. So then, I know there's a lot of words on the screen. And we're not going to walk, or walk through all of it with an example here soon. But this is kind of a little like cheat sheet, for lack of better words, of like the steps that you would go through for drawing your shear and moment diagrams. So I'm going to keep our cheat sheet off to the side as as we're going through each of these steps. So your very first step, just like how we talked about before, we're going to be simplifying our loads. And on your actual exam, they may show this as like a visual representation of the beam or something like that. But in structural engineering, you always want to simplify it down to stick figures. So just like we talked about, there would be like, this will be simplified down to the point load. This will also be simplified down to your point load. And then you would calculate whatever your reaction would end up being. And that would be step one B. And this is the concept of static equilibrium. Where the sum of all of your forces are equal to zero. So for some of the forces in the X direction would be equal to zero, some forces in, in the Y direction is equal to zero, and your, some of your moments would also be equal to zero. Oftentimes, the notation for some is shown like this. So yeah, going back here, you would show your reaction forces of what is being resisted. And you would solve that. And we'll go through an example problem that has actual numbers of it, we'll solve, solve through it. So now the concept, or did anybody have any questions regarding like static equilibrium or the simplified loads? Yeah?
Nothing in the chat box.
Awesome. So then now it's starting to draw your shear diagram. So the very next step that you want to do, granted, you fill in your unknowns for your reactions, but you would want to draw vertical lines wherever there is a discontinuity. So supports are considered a discontinuity, so you would have a line there. Change in load, so with this beam uniform, there's a discontinuity there, so you would show your line drawn down. There isn't, there isn't anything going on here, but then you run into your point load. So that's a discontinuity. So here's your line that is drawn, drawn down here. And then you hit your next load, you draw your fine, and then your support again. Once you have your lines drawn and your two representations of your beams, this first line is going to be for your shear diagram. And this next one is going to be for your moment diagram. We're now ready to draw what each of those are going to look like. So for the concept of shear, so there's two ways when it comes to drawing shear and moment diagrams. The first way is very mathematical. And the type that you would typically learn during engineering school, or like when you're taking your calculus classes, where you're taking the derivative of, you know, your shear is the derivative of your shear from mo- sorry, not your derivative, the integral of your shear is your moment. Or if you're, the derivative of your moment then becomes your shear. We're not going to be going into that because I think in the AREs, it's a little bit more qualitative. It's more about understanding the concepts and being able to visually see how the structure reacts. So to put it as simple as possible, for shear loads, your uniform load, so this first one, will linearly vary. And also going back to your step by step, we'll start off with step two A with the or sorry, step two B where we're starting from left to right. So we know that we have our reaction going up. So whatever your value is for your reaction, that's going to be where you start. And then we have our uniform load here, and so the uniform load, we know that it linearly varies. So, and this load is going down. So this load is going up, so that means it's positive, so it starts here. And because you have a uniform going downwards, that's a negative, so it's, you're going to be so you're going up. And it's going to linearly go down. And then, when there's no load, that means there's nothing going on, so you're going to be coasting straight across until there's your next abrupt change, which is a negative load that goes immediately down. So whatever that difference is from this point, it will go down. Once again, there's nothing going on here, so we'll continue to coast across until we reach to our shear, or not shear, or triangular load. And for triangular load, it's a little bit more parabolic or curved in shape. We're not going to go over like exactly what that shape is going to be. Just understanding that it is going to be parabolic. And then when we go into the moment, it's going to be in the opposite direction, but it's going to be a third order of it being parabolic. Yeah, just, just trust me that it will be curved. And represent it with a curved line, and I think that will definitely get to whatever visual answer that you want. So for the sake of notes, to my notes in here. So shear, this uniform load will linearly vary. If there's no load, then it's constant. And there's concentrated load, there's abrupt change in shear, and triangular load is parabolic. All right. Any questions on shear?
From AJ, he's asking, oh, are we getting the type materials?
Oh yeah, of course.
Yeah. Yes, AJ.
So now going to moment diagrams. Copy this down real quick. I lost my All right. So for moment diagrams, it's the relationship between moment and shear is that the change, or the area in your shear diagram represents the value of the moment in your moment diagram. And I'll explain this a little bit further. So as your moment changes, actually, let me draw it out, and I think it'll make a little bit more sense. Which is actually, when we go into the, into the example problems, the, that area, the concept around area will make a lot more sense. All right. So as far as like visual representation goes, once again, it's you know, taking the integral of this. So then, because it's linear, this will also be parabolic in shape. However, for moment diagrams, it will always start at the value of zero. And it only starts at the value of zero because we have a pinned connection. Whereas if we had a fixed connection, then you would have a moment value at your support point. And we'll go over an example for that as well. But in this case, because you don't have a moment reaction, it's going to be zero. And because this is linear and the area is positive, it's going to be a positive parabolic shape. Now, because this shear is rectangular in shape, that means that it will linearly vary. And because this is positive, or the value is above this line, that means it's going to continue to grow. Now, on the other side of this, we have this value here, and because this is negative, because this is negative, this is going to go downwards. And because this is a straight line, that means for moment, it's going to be linearly going down. And since this is parabolic and the area is once again negative, it's going to be like a third order parabolic shape. And it will result back down to zero because we have a roller here. That may have been a little bit confusing. I promise, once we start going through example problems, it'll make a lot more sense. But if you have, or is there any conceptual questions regarding what the shape of the moment needs to be? No questions? No. Right, so I'm just popping my notes here. So that way you guys have them. So that way you guys have them. Alright, so let's go through an example together. Let's say that you have a. Beam. And for this example, we're just going to keep it simple. Call. It. Actually, we could probably use the same example here, give it some numbers and. And kind of walk through that. And this will start at 100 pounds per foot and end at zero. And we'll just say that this is a 40 foot long beam equally segmented at 10 feet each. And if you guys are faster than me in going through each of these calculations. Then feel free to chime in and. Give me the answers. Alright, so the first step is we're going to simplify everything, just how we talked about. And then we're going to set it equal, or we're going to use static equilibrium, set everything equal to zero and. Figure out what our unknown reactions are. So we know that this is 100 pounds per foot. And that's divided by 10 feet. And because this is a uniform load, we know that this is going to act right in the center by feet away. This is 100 pounds as we know it. Because this is triangular, this is going to occur a third of the distance this way, or two thirds. From the other direction. So then. So this will be the 100 pounds per foot times 10 divided by 2 because it's a triangle, so. 500 pounds here. And now we're going to solve. For our reactions, so we're going to call this point A. And call this here point B. And we know that because this is the pinned condition, then we're going to have an A that is A sub X. Or sorry, this will, because it's going up and down, it's A sub I. And once again, because it's pinned, it's resisting in the X direction, so that way this beam doesn't just roll off. So for. So for static equilibrium, we know that the forces in the X direction is equal to zero. And then solve for any unknowns. We know that the forces in the Y direction is being equal to zero. And. Well, in the X direction, there's only one unknown, and there's no other forces in the X direction. So we already know that Ax is equal to zero, right? Any questions there? On why Ax is equal to zero? No? So for, so now it's solving for the two unknowns of Ay and By. And so for By, or sorry, Ay. We're going to use, let's get some of the forces. So we're going to say. See, so there's an Ay. Because that is in the positive direction, we're going to leave this as positive. Because this is in the negative direction, so we're going to say minus 1000. Minus 100 pounds. Moving along, minus 500 pounds. And then. By is positive, so we're going to say plus By. Now, the issue here is that we have two unknowns. So there's. So we're not, so there's no way to really solve for two unknowns, so. By just using this equation, so we're going to have to do the sum of the moments. And so we'll start with some of the moments about point A. And that will help us with solving for what By is. And once we solve for By, we can plug that number back into. This equation right here. So. Here's some of the moments. We're going to set that equal to zero. And so your moment force. Is going to be your. Force times your distance. So if we're going to take it about point A, the distance from point A to the 1000 pounds. Is just like the. Okay, I think I mentioned earlier, since it acts right in the center. It's five feet. And then, so we're going to. Actually, before I skip to that, sorry for going backwards, guys. So left to right, we're going to start with Ay, and because that, because Ay is right at point A. That's why Ay is going to be Ay times zero, so. So sorry, I skipped forward there. So Ay times zero, so that's why that will be zero. Then we're going to go to here, 1000 pounds times five feet. And we're going to go to. And the reason why this is positive, going back to our sign convention, is because it's going clockwise, so. So if you could imagine if this was your arm and you have your force going down, then it's rotating in the clockwise direction.
I have a question.
Sure.
Why is the A axis, is it zero? Is it because there's no. Contradicting force?
The reason why Ay is zero is because it acts at the distance of zero. So in this formula, if we were to include Ay, it would be Ay. Raise a five times zero for your distance.
Okay, gotcha.
Alright, so then. So your next load is your 100 pounds. So from point A, what is the distance where this 100 pounds is acting? If anybody knows, go ahead and speak up since I can't access the chat box right now. So where is your 100 pounds acting?
20 feet.
That's great, yeah, so it's 20 feet from point A. Now, it's determining where your next load, which is the 500 pounds. So that's going to be acting. 10 feet, we know that this is one third of 10 feet, so then that's going to be. 3.33. From this point here. So your total distance is going to be five foot plus five foot. That's 10 foot, 10 foot, and then 3.33 feet, so that's what, 33.33 feet? So you have your 500 pounds times. 32.33 feet. And then, once again, because it's acting in the clockwise direction. This here is positive. Alright, now we have our By, we don't know how many pounds this is yet, so we're just going to represent this as. The supply times your distance of 40 feet. But because this is a reaction. And your overall length is 40 feet, this is working in the counterclockwise direction. So. This shouldn't be a plus sign, this should actually be a negative sign. Alright. So we know that. This is zero, so we're going to call that zero. 1000 pounds times. Five is 500. 5000. Pound feet. And this is a, pound foot is like your unit for moment. Another unit could be kip feet. Kip inches, pound inches, it's always going to be a force and then like a dash times your unit of length. So. So that became 500 feet. Next one is. Going to be 100 pounds times 20, so that's going to be 2000 pound feet. And then, can someone do a math for me, and what is 500 times 33.33? Is no one going to help me?
16, 665.
66. Point five?
No.
16,665.
16,000.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then, because this is negative, we're going to move this to the other side of our equation that we have set to zero. So. So we're going to take this guy. And move it here. So then that takes that negative away and it becomes positive. To the other side of the sign. So. To solve for now By is we take the sum of all these loads and then we divide 40 from each side. Can someone help me with this again?
590, 91.625, say 592.
And will that be in pounds or pound feet? What's your unit?
Pounds.
Correct, because it's a, it's a force, it's not a moment for that. Reaction. Alright, so now that we know what By is, we can go back to our equation up here where we set all the forces in the Y direction equal to zero. And we can. Plug By in here. And solve for Ay. Move this up slightly, a little bit more. And so since I want Ay to stay as. I guess a positive value, I'm going to move everything into the other side, so. Did anyone get confused by what I just did here? Are you guys good with like the math of how I moved it around?
Yeah, you played with a positive and negative by transferring it on the side of the equal sign.
So then by plugging By in. What is my? Ay life value?
1008 pounds.
Alright, so now that we know what all this is. Or now that we know what our unknowns are, we're just going to copy this over real quick so we can start drawing. My shear moment. Ay, that is. So, alright, so now going to our little step by step thing, we did step B, which was here of. Your static equilibrium and solving for your unknowns. Then now, and we just drew our three body diagram in with our unknowns filled in. And then the next thing is drawing vertical lines for where you have. Your discontinuities. Which we had identified before. And so we're gonna draw the beam for sheer diagram. I'm gonna go ahead and skip to step three A and draw the beam for the moment diagram. I'm gonna represent this as a shear and this here for the B for shear and M for moment. And yeah, now we're gonna start drawing. So because we're at point A, we know that our reaction here is positive. So we're gonna immediately start at a thousand and eight pounds. And just like how we talked about before, because this is a uniformly uniform load that is pointing to the screen. Um, because it's a uniform load, it's going downwards. Or it's gonna be varying linearly. So and because it's going in the negative direction, I know that it's going down. And but how far is this going down? So we know that this is starting at a thousand pounds? Or a thousand and eight pounds? Because the question is like, how far do we draw this down, right? Well, we know that this is a hundred pounds per foot. And we're gonna multiply that by ten. And so we know that that's gonna end up going down gradually by about a thousand pounds. So really, we're looking at it something that probably looks something closer to this. Because this point right here is a thousand and eight pounds minus a thousand pounds. Alright, so we're at roughly about eight pounds here. Uh, there doesn't seem to be any discontinuities. So just like how we went through the concept before, we're just gonna draw a straight line until the next discontinuity happens.
So why doesn't it jump when there's a thousand pounds down? Why the shear diagram doesn't change at the moment when there is a thousand pounds down?
I can see how this is confusing because this is a simplified load here and this simplified load is representing this uniform load. So I'm gonna delete this because this was only used to determine what our reactions were. When determining our diagram, we're only focusing on the type of load that's being distributed along the beam. Sorry about that confusion, guys. So because this is a hundred pounds per foot gradually going downwards. So that's that. So now there's no load occurring. So we're going to continue onward. Since there's no discontinuities or any changes in loads, until we hit about, until we hit the hundred pounds, which is our next discontinuity. And because it's just a point force, it's a and not a gradual force, we're just gonna go immediately straight down by a hundred pounds. So we're floating at about eight pounds here minus a hundred. So then we're gonna end up at about ninety two pounds here. So that abrupt change happened, but there's no other gradual changes. So we're gonna continue onwards with our shear. And then we have this next downward force. And just like how I told you guys to trust me that it's parabolic in shape, we're just gonna show this curve and going downwards. And the curve will be deeper here because it's heavier on this side and it will go to. And so then, because we have this reaction here, essentially this here is going to be ninety two pounds. And then we're at the our simplified load of this is five hundred pounds, right? So then that's where that other five hundred comes from because that's what it's gradually going down to. Obviously, this is not really the scale. So then we'll end up with the five hundred and ninety two pounds that matches our reaction. Alright, any questions with this?
Yeah, it's just triggering my OCCD. Is the the first A, is a thousand pounds supposed to be more dramatic? We need to say more above, more angular above, yeah?
Yeah.
Right? By proportion. I apologize. It's just me being OCD.
Is there any other question, guys?
I don't see any questions in the chat box.
Alright, so then so now starting for your moment, we're going to be to so for drawing the moment and the value for it, it's kind of like taking whatever your area is within your shear diagram. And so this is kind of what we were talking about before. So right here, we have, it's going from a thousand pounds to eight pounds. And so we're gonna take that total area. So because this is triangular and so we're gonna cut this as like a segment because there's two segments to it. Right, there are eight pounds. And so we know this triangular portion is like going from a thousand to zero, for the sake of conversation. And we know that this distance is ten feet. So then that area or that moment value is equal to a thousand pounds of shear times your ten feet. Plus, or sorry, and because it's a triangle, it's divided by two, right? Plus your rectangular shape here, which is your that that eight pounds that is consistent all the way here. So eight pounds times ten feet. And so your total moment that would be applying here is what that will be. Five thousand and eighty pounds. Is that what you guys got? Pounds per time foot. Right. And because so going back to the sign convention, with this beam line, anything above the beam is considered positive. Anything below the beam is considered negative. So when we draw out this moment diagram, we know that this total area is a positive area. And because it's angular, it's going to be parabolic in shape for your moment diagram. So try to draw. And we're always gonna start with zero because it's because our support is a pinned connection. So therefore, there's no moment that is being resisted by it. So we start with zero. And it goes to and because it's positive, it goes to five thousand and eighty pound feet, the year point that occurs right here. Alright. So next, we have the eight pounds that are that is pushing through in our shear diagram. And once again, since that's the positive area, that's going to very slightly go up by eight pounds times ten feet. So you would actually end up with a moment of five thousand and sixteen pounds. But here. And and then, so now that we're at this point, then that and we go to our next area. And because this is a negative area, we know that our moment is going to have a downward trend. And since it's so this will be ninety two pounds times ten. So that's nine hundred and twenty pounds. So it'll be a slightly more I'm gonna make this a little bit more dramatic since it's five thousand pounds. Oh, did somebody have a question? Right, so then so it's gonna be about nine hundred pounds of area going downwards. So what is, and because of negative, so what is nine hundred or sorry, nine hundred and twenty pounds minus five thousand one hundred and sixty? There's a button that is stuck on my calculator. Can someone help me with that? What is what's five thousand one hundred and sixty minus nine hundred and twenty?
Four thousand two hundred forty.
So that will be the moment that occurs at this point. And then we have another negative area. So then this will kind of tie it off. And this makes sense because our roller cannot resist any moment loads. So then this will have to become zero. And so even though this is kind of parabolic in shape where we can go ahead and bring that down to zero, but that would that would to calculate the area for that would be very difficult. And I think if you were to do like ten times, you know, five hundred and ninety two pounds, that would go, that would give you like a negative number here. And that would be incorrect. So because and the important concept there is knowing that your roller would result into a negative or not negative, a zero moment. So because it's difficult to really calculate that area, we're just going to trust that this is going to end up being that third order of parabolic shape. And so this ends up being roughly your moment diagram. And say if you had a question that asked you like, what is your maximum moment that occurs within this moment diagram, then it would be this moment that occurs right in the center. So for homework, I put together six different conditions. One that we didn't really talk about. And if you guys want, we can totally go over the another example question. Let me know if you guys want to. If not, you don't have to. And so yeah. And if you guys want to work through these problems, if you guys want to work through them now, and then we can because we still have another forty five minutes left, we could either do that or we can move on to going over trust design. So I will leave it up to you guys.
Trust design. Trust.
Oh.
Trust?
I trust and trust.
I trust. Alright, sounds good. Alright, so the detail that I have prepped, it was one that I did. I don't know if there's any Phoenix folks on call right now. But this is the same example that we had already gone over. So if you want to hang around, awesome. If not, then feel free to drop off.
So we have fifteen minutes left. Do you think we can finish classes in fifteen minutes?
Oh, wow. I didn't realize that we have time to fly very quickly. No, I don't. I don't think we'll have enough time to go through that in fifteen minutes. Sorry about that, guys. I guess I guess we're gonna have, or we're ending, ending early today. So by fifteen minutes or so.
We'll be able to share these examples with everyone, the one that you showed. So at least people can know the the homework.
Oh, the homework?
Yes. So please, everyone can solve at home. And then we can even maybe spend the first ten minutes in the next session, just going over the answers to make sure everyone got the correct answers.
That sounds good. Awesome. Well, thank you so much, guys.
Yeah, thank you all for attending. Well, thank you, Isha, for a good presentation.
Thank you, Isha. It was really fun.
Awesome.
This is awesome. Okay, thank you all for attending. Now, as everyone here gets Okay. Thank you all for attending. Now, is everyone here getting my emails? Just to make sure the next one, I'm sending you guys are receiving that email. Okay. I think yes. Yeah. So I'll, I'll send email for the next session. It, it, it's going to be the same time, like 5:30 to 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mohammed.
Yeah, of course. And Isha, the next one is tresses. That's correct?
Yep. Next one will be tresses.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. Thank you all for attending. Have a good night. And thank you, Isha, a lot. Thank you so much. Great presentation. Yeah, thank you. Bye bye.
Hi.
Bye, everyone.